To order, and I’m going to turn to our clerk, Mr. Cribbs, to look after calling the roll.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Arnold.
President.
Counselor Bushy.
Counselor Bradley.
Counselor Broad.
President.
Counselor Brusowicz.
President.
Counselor Case.
President.
Counselor Cook.
President.
Counselor Gilliland.
President.
Counselor Gillis.
President.
Warden McDougal.
Here.
Counselor McKenzie.
President.
Counselor Marriott.
President.
Counselor McCharles.
President.
Counselor McGugan.
President.
Counselor Napper.
President.
Deputy Warden Veen.
President.
Counselor Weaver.
President.
The roll has been called, and you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Cribbs. Please rise and join me for a moment of silent reflection. Next item on the agenda is disclosures of pecuniary interests. Does any member have one to declare? Seeing none, then I’ll move into our agenda. And before I do that, looking for a welcome, a warm welcome, to our new general manager of Infrastructure and Development Building Services, Jason Cole, who’s been a fixture around here for some time, is now stepping into Mr. Kataba’s former role. Jason, we welcome you to our chamber, and we look forward to this new role and the leadership that you will bring to your division. Thank you. This morning, we have a presentation followed by a delegation, and I will look to council for a motion to permit our guests beyond the bar. Moved by Counselor Arnold, seconded by Counselor Weaver. All in favor? That motion is carried. I will then first invite Mr. Terry May, former deputy chief of the Oil Springs Fire Department, and Deputy Warden Veen forward, as we of Lampton County Council will recognise Terry for his Good Samaritan activities some time ago and during a recent fire. I will speak to that a little bit once I’m down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Terry May, for your act of bravery and protection of life during a recent fire in Petroya, it is my honour, on behalf of the County of Lampton, to recognise that act of selfless bravery on this sombre morning in Canada, while we’re all hearing the news about what’s going on in Alberta, and in particularly Fort McMurray. Acts of bravery, that random act of rising to the human call that there could be life and property at risk, is trademark of our emergency services here in Lampton County. It matters not whether they’re volunteers or paid firefighters that are on the job every day. We wouldn’t be the strong community we are, the safe community we are, without all of our emergency services. But your particular act of bravery to respond now as a citizen, selflessly looking for the safety of somebody else ahead of your own, is commendable. And we would have been remiss, as the County of Lampton, to not recognise such an important act in our community. So with this, I present you this certificate, Terry.
Thank you very much.
You’re welcome. And thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, item number six, is a delegation, and I would invite Tracy Pringle, Account Manager, Zone One of Municipal and Stakeholders Relations, and Amanda McDougal, Regional Manager of MPAC, to discuss with County Council several topics, including the 2016 reassessment year and the new release of Municipal Connect. Okay.
Thank you, Warden, and members of County Council, for providing me an opportunity to address you this morning, and happy International Firefighters’ Day to Mr. May and all of our firefighters who save lives every day. Our agenda for the next 10 minutes, we’ll cover a brief overview of property assessment and taxation, the residential experience, tools for property owners, tools for municipalities, and the preliminary market trends and values for Lampton County. Property assessment and property taxes are a product of an integrated system made up of three main parties: MPAC, who provide current value assessments of over 5 million properties in Ontario with value in excess of $2.2 trillion; the province, including the Ministry of Finance, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and the Assessment Review Board; and the municipalities themselves, who determine their revenue requirements, set out property tax rates, and collect tax from property owners. This year, every property owner in Ontario will receive an assessment notice to set values for the 2017 to 2020 tax years. The four-year cycle is legislated by the Province of Ontario. Residential assessment notices are being mailed over a 21-week period which began in April of this year. We’re delivering values five months earlier than ever before to assist in confirming values and stabilising the roll return. This is supported by the new Municipal Connect tool and redesigned About My Property application for property owners. Assessment update toolkits have been shared with municipal staff at all municipalities. This time, we deployed an advanced disclosure protocol. And to summarise that, first, guides were published for 11 special property types. That included things like automotive assembly plants, large steel processing, and large wood processing. Additional guides are being published to mpac.ca over the coming months, and the residential methodology guide is now available. Valuation reports explaining how the methodology has been applied, as well as provide market data about key components of the property type were Level Two, and Level Three is where we are now, with detailed information and property level detail, which is available to owners through About My Property and to municipalities through the new Municipal Connect tool. So why are we doing this? To help achieve stability and transparency with roll delivery for both municipalities and ratepayers. We really encourage the municipal participation in this process, and our aim is no surprise reductions for the next four years. Residential notices were delivered in Lampton County starting on April 18, and I hope that most of you have received yours by now. Farm property assessment notices will go out October 11, and multi-residential and business notices will be mailed on October 18 of this year. The property assessment notice is our key touch point with property owners, and it has been redesigned for simplicity and clarity. The first thing you’ll notice is a municipal specific issue date. And the reason for that is because Bill 144, which came into effect this year, states that property owners will have a rolling 120-day deadline in the assessment review year to request for reconsideration. Our hope is that our request for reconsiderations will be dealt with, especially in Lampton County, before that roll return in December, as the final date for RFIs in Lampton is August 16 of this year. We’ve incorporated plain language and design principles. The 2016 assessed value and change in the assessed value from the 2012 assessment are highlighted. Now, one point of note is that the numbers here can be deceiving for the public at large. The 2016 value is the destination value, or the final value of the four-year phase-in. That is what that property will be worth as at 2020. My next slide shows you that, this is still on the first page of the notice, this is a clear explanation of the phase-in values, identifying to property owners the value of that property each year of the four-year phase-in, as well as what their request for reconsideration deadline is for each of those four years. Page two includes a simple explanation of the Ontario Property Assessment System and the five key factors that affect 85% of residential assessment. We’re really directing property owners to use the About My Property tool for more information on market trends, percent change by municipality, and detailed information about their property. Also on the notice are the roles and responsibilities of MPAC, the provincial government, and the municipalities. About My Property is a secure online tool. It is aimed at improved communication and transparency for property owners. It allows owners to compare with other properties in the area. The tool will generate up to 24 detailed profiles and 100 snapshots of comparative properties. Visitors can view market trends and residential sale prices without having to log in. So to resolve assessment concerns, we’re really asking owners to look at that number and say, could I have sold my property on January 1 of this year for the number on that paper? If the answer is yes, then the assessment is correct, you should file it with your important papers. If the answer is no, or you’re not sure, we’re asking people to visit the About My Property, to review the information that we have on file for the property, and perform the comparative property analysis. They can then file a request for reconsideration if they’re still not happy with the property value that is stated. That is a free reconsideration by MPAC staff. If they are not happy with the results of the reconsideration, they can file appeal with the Assessment Review Board, and there is a $75 administration fee for residential owners to file with the ARB. Contact. Whoops, sorry. So Municipal Connect has been completely redesigned, and the values are made available as they are ready. It is focused on the 2016 preliminary assessed values as a tool to work with the municipalities to get these values right prior to the roll return. Currently, only residential values are available. So in terms of market trends, the following information has been validated by 38,737 data touchpoints in Lampton County. That includes sales investigations and data quality checks. The following slides will take you through each of the highlights for every municipality in Lampton County. So this is the overview of Lampton County. Provincially, we’re seeing an overall broad residential class increase of 4.5%. You can see that in Lampton County, that’s at about 2.6%. I should point out that the percent change is year-over-year, so 2016 to 2017 change, and the value change since 2012 is the difference in the two destination values, so the final value of this assessment versus the final value of the next assessment. So in Warwick, we see that it’s about a 3.5% increase. Brook Alvinston is experiencing about a 6.3% increase. Oil Springs, we see about 3.4%, and Donufemia, 3.8%. In Petroya, about a 3.1%, and Asgillin, 5.3%. And then we begin to see some of the other property classes that are present in the other municipalities. So in Lampton Shores, we have single-family detached condo and waterfront, as well as in Plimpton, Wyoming, and you can see what those increase rates look like. Sarnia, again, and St. Clair Township. Point Edward, and then I’ve just circled back with Lampton County to make the balance of the slide, really. That ends the formal portion of the presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to take them.
Sir Napper.
Well, thank you very much for an informative presentation there, and I’d like to thank you very much for that, and also by, thank you for increasing my wealth by quite a bit of money, $30,000 on my assessment. My question is, I didn’t see wind turbines where they come in. They’re under industrial, and are they still at that stupid value of $44,000? And how are they going to be assessed per property? Like, it seems criminal to have it under the industrial, and where does this policing cost, these rumours I hear that are coming in on them? I guess that’s through MPAC too, I think. I’m not sure. But just where do we stand on turbines? And does that go, like in our case, Suncor? Does Suncor get the bill on the turbines? Do they go against the property? Or how is that going to work?
In terms of specific properties, I would have to answer outside of open forum. However, as an overview, there are changes coming to the way that industrial wind turbines are assessed. There are slight increases, and you will see those over the four-year phase-in. I would be more than happy to share that with each of your administrative staff to share up to you.
Follow-up, Counselor Napper, then.
Yeah, I’m just having trouble finding out where the fairness is between industrial wind turbine and a grain elevator. Like, why aren’t they assessed for what they’re worth, instead of fudging around with these here numbers where, hell, if you have a swamp lot at the lake, you pay more tax than that?
I understand and recognise your question, sir. There are different ways that industrial wind turbines are treated in terms of assessment across the country. In Ontario, as a function of the Ministry of Finance and the Green Energy Act, it was prescribed how the treatment and the taxation would work for industrial wind turbines.
Are any other questions from council? Yes, Counselor McCharles.
Thanks, Warden, and thanks for your presentation. Actually, I got my assessment, and about 15 minutes later, I got on my computer to appeal my assessment. I tried 16 different ways to get that through, and it wouldn’t work. And so I couldn’t save my five bucks, or whatever it is, so I had to actually send a cheque off to my appeal. And I can understand that there are glitches in the computer, but, you know, it seems actually pretty simple. But where I found the difficulty was putting in the year, whatever year that we’re supposed to be on the assessment. I tried 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and I even went back to 15, and none of those would work. So I don’t know whether that’s a common occurrence, or whether that was just me on the computer, but I did find an issue with that. I did find an issue with my assessment as well. Thanks.
May I ask, was that the About My Property tool you were trying to use?
I was in the site itself.
That’s the first time I’ve heard that kind of feedback, so if you’ll allow me to take that back, and we can do an investigation to see what happened. Thank you.
Counselor Marriott, did I see your hand in the air? No? Okay. Sorry about that. Any other questions from members? Seeing none. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation this morning. Moving on, then, with our agenda, council. We’ll go next to the minutes of March 2, 2016, and March 16, 2016, the open session. Looking for some direction from council. Counselor Gillis.
Move to receive.
Okay, move to receive. Looking for a seconder. Deputy Warden Veen. Discussion. Counselor Napper.
Yeah, I’m on page, I’m not sure what page you’re on. CCO 5, 2016, a letter from Township of North Brattonack. They’re looking for support on their motion there. Am I on the right one?
I think you’re in the wrong section. We’re just approving the minutes right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that’s all right. No questions? All in favour, then, of the motion to receive? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Correspondence, then? We have items A to F. There are six items. Counsel, Counselor Gillis.
Madam Warden, I was remiss. I’m going to have to declare a conflict of interest on one of these letters, item C.
Okay.
If it comes up.
Okay. Did you get that? Okay. Okay, now Counselor Napper.
Thank you very much, Warden McDougal. A letter from the Terra Miskey, looking for support on their motion. I would like to, if I get a seconder, support that motion.
Counselor Napper is looking for support. Any other items? Counselor McGugan.
Oh, I just seconded.
Oh, seconded, okay. Counselor Gillis.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I would like to ask council to consider support for item E, a letter from Laurie Scott, MPP, Halliburton, Corwath, Lakes Brock.
Is there a seconder for that? Counselor McCharles. Any others? Okay, so that’s moving the correspondence to receive, saving except for item D and E that council has moved for support. All in favour of that? Opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have item B, correspondence from member municipalities. Deputy Warden Veen.
Thank you, Warden. I’d make a motion to, what am I trying to say here? Accept this?
Okay, move to support that motion?
Support. Yes, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Cook. Discussion. All in favour? Opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, we have three items in number nine, not requiring a motion. Minutes from Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership Tourism, Sarnia-Lampton, and the County of Lampton Community Development Corporation Council, looking for a motion on these reports. Counselor McCharles. Okay, to receive and file, seconded by Counselor Brusowitz. Discussion on any of these reports. Seeing none? All in favour? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, there are no items tabled from previous meetings. Oh, no, sorry, I’ve headed myself, put my glasses on. Committee minutes. AM minutes from April 20, 2016. I’ll put this over to Chair Counselor Weaver.
Yes, thank you, Warden McDougal. I would be pleased to present the minutes of Committee AM from April 20 for council’s consideration.
Item one, two, three, four, five. Counselor McCharles.
Thank you, Warden McDougal. I’d just like to thank the AM Committee for the recommendation here. I’d just like to state also that of all the time that I’ve been on council in the town of Petroya, this has been, I think, the fiercest issue that I’ve ever been involved in, because I have received more calls regarding truck traffic than any other issue that I can remember as far as the town is concerned. So I do appreciate the recommendation, and I would certainly support it.
Thank you. Number six, number seven, number eight, nine, oh, sorry, Counselor Case, did you have something on eight? Okay. Counsel, no. Okay, sorry. I’ve got the numeric vertigo here. Nine, 10, and 11. Turning back, then, to Counselor Weaver.
Yes, Warden McDougal, I would be pleased to move the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Marriott. All in favour? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. Turning now to the PM minutes, I would turn to that committee chair, oh, sorry, Counselor Napper.
Yeah, I’d just like to offer my congratulations to Chris Doyle there. I noticed in the minutes there that he is going to go on a cruise for a long, long time, and just like to thank him for his years of service. I know I’ve been quite involved having folks at Meadowview and stuff like that, and I’d just like to thank Chris for all his years of service with the County of Lampton, and wish him and his wife well. He’s a pretty young man to be retiring, so I just don’t know what he’s got in mind, so maybe, over in Plimpton, Wyoming, we seem to have a tendency to pick up retirees, so maybe he’d come and work for us. But congratulations, Chris, and thanks for all your service.
Thank you very much. I’ll turn this PM minutes over to the Chair, Counselor McCharles.
Thank you, Warden McDougal. The afternoon committee met on April 20 for about 20 minutes, and we actually went through a lot of business in that 20 minutes, and I’d like to present those minutes for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. I’ll turn this back to you, Counselor McCharles.
That took longer than the meeting. I’ll move the adoption of this day’s minute.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Broad. All in favour? Opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, so we have no items tabled from previous meetings. We’ll turn now to item number 12, notice of motion, and I’ll turn this part of the meeting over to Counselor Case.
Yes, Warden, I’ll move the motion, and if there’s a seconder, I can take questions or speak to it.
Okay, that is seconded by Counselor Gillis. Go ahead, Counselor Case.
Okay, so I guess, Warden, through you to everybody else, the reason for bringing this motion forward is I’ve sat on that organisation from time to time, four different years, actually, and it’s not to criticise the organisation, I want to be very clear. I just think the world around us is changing, so I think these four things I’ve listed are just good things to check up on, and just see where we are, see the makeup of the board. There’s some very good people that have sat on that over the years. There’s also a piece, and there were a lot of other regions and counties around us are going to non-political boards, complete non-political, with a reporting mechanism back to council, whether it be quarterly or whatever the case may be. So a lot of this is just put on the table as food for thought from the standpoint of a municipal council like myself, who’s sat there, and again, not to criticise the organisation, I want to be very clear, that’s not what I’m here to do today, but to maybe put these things on the table for consideration, to have a report come back to us as councillors. So that’s my comments, Madam Warden.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Case. Anyone else? Counselor Brusowitz.
I think this motion is long overdue. I am supporting 100%. I think there should be another element there, and that’s a skill set of the required or desirable skill set of the members of the board. I don’t think we want to have members who know it all. There’s no such a thing. It’s sort of like a mix of skills, of pure focus on specific areas, and they superseding everybody else, you know, and combined, that will lead to synergies that will move the organisation forward. And I think that can come up with the report. I thank Counselor Case for bringing it forward. It’s long overdue, and I’m hoping that that will actually happen.
Thank you, Counselor Brusowitz. Counselor McGugan.
Madam Warden, members of County Council, I say thanks to Counselor Case for bringing the point up. Who did Counselor Case have in mind to do the report? Because that could kind of slant the way it comes out.
I believe he was looking for the general manager. That is correct, Counselor Case? Yes. So it would be Mr. Malley himself who would complete that report for the next meeting, according to the motion. Counselor Case, you wish to speak to that?
Yes, I have the utmost faith in Mr. Malley as our general manager to bring back that report. Maybe one thing I would add is, when you talk about the makeup of the board, again, very good people, very qualified, but the one piece in there that really, really hangs out there for me is the fact we have one agricultural representative for the whole organisation, and I think that’s weak and a little bit light. That’s one point I will make. I said I wasn’t going to make any suggestions or anything, but... I said I wasn't going to make any suggestions or anything, but that's one part of the piece of the puzzle. The other piece of the puzzle, if we continue to be a board which we have two political people sit on, if that's deemed to be the way to go, I think the Sinclair Township is well overdue to have a seat on that board. With all the industrial development and everything they have there, I think it would only be fitting if we continue with political representation that that might be considered. These are just my comments and my thoughts. Or again, as I said earlier, maybe it needs to be a non-political board that reports back quarterly to county council. Mr. Malley has brought back, and the board has endorsed some new reporting mechanisms to county council, which I really do appreciate, but I just will make those comments in lieu of the other comments I made before, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Case. I'll pass those along. Any other? Seeing none. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. I will now call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That's carried. Okay, other business. First of all, we'll deal with a motion before council today. Council Gillis is seeking a motion by council to endorse her nomination to the FCM Board for a period beginning June 2016, ending June 2017. Moved by Counsel Case, seconded by Counsel McGugan. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried unanimously. Congratulations, Council Gillis, you've served us well, and I know you're really interested in the affairs of FCM. That's wonderful. There are some other items of business. I'm going to turn this over now to Counsel McGugan, who's left a couple of printouts on the Lampton Federation of Agriculture, and also some discussion about support to families with children dealing with autism spectrum disorders. So I'll let Counsel McGugan deal with this in whichever order you choose.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden, Members of County Council. First, go back to March, President of the Lampton Federation of Agriculture was here, made a presentation on agriculture in Lampton County, had a couple of vice presidents with him. Since that time, they have put out a small booklet on agriculture in Lampton County, as well as agriculture in the province of Ontario, which is becoming a more and more economic driver. So he asked me to pass them out. I'm sorry, I'm short a couple. Just the managers that didn't get them, but I will get some for the managers. So I say, take a look at it, and it's for your information. Now, the other item here, I say thanks to staff, because I did not get this to staff soon enough to get into your package, about autism. I just can't believe what's going on with our provincial government. I'm not making this a political comment, I'm just saying that when you read and see, and I think we all know families that have someone that has autism, and how sad it is. And when you read, and I know you just got this this morning, but if you read the articles there about the improvement that the intensive therapy does, how a boy at six years old was unable to talk at 11, it's just amazing what he's doing, and he's involved in sports. So they're cutting this all off at four years old. So there's people in there that were 22 days from getting into the intensive care, and it's being cut off as of, I think, is it July the 1st? So all I'm asking for, and it may not do any good, but at least they hear from ordinary people. I would like to see a strongly worded letter from the warden to the people involved, like the premier, the leaders of the opposition parties, the health minister, and the education minister, as well as our local MPPs. And I just think it's how sad, we're talking $333 million over five years. They're going to send the families, I forget how many numbers are there, a few thousand families, $8,000, one-time payment, and if you go through the numbers, it's costable $50,000 a year for intensive therapy for these boys and girls. So I just think it's sad when I see what's going on, where we seem to have millions of dollars for other things. So I did not ask anybody to second it, but I am looking for a seconder to support this. Thank you.
Is seconded that? Further discussion on the motion? Council Gillis.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I certainly want to endorse and applaud Counselor McGugan for bringing this forward. Having autism in my family, there is a broad spectrum of autism. It doesn't, it doesn't display itself as what we normally would think. It's a very subtle disease and very hard to detect, particularly in young children. And looking at what has happened in Ontario, I have to hang my head in shame, knowing full well what happens in, what is happening in Alberta and how they deal with it, and how quickly they get their children assessed, was quite eye-opening for me. And in one respect, even though we don't want our children to leave our province, it was good that our, my family left, that particular part of my family left, to get the treatment that they needed in Alberta. And that was not the reason that they left, but that was one of the reasons. I really am dismayed when I see this, and knowing full well that the assessment process can be very lengthy, and realising that when you cut it off at four years old, for those who have taken their children in to be assessed, they may miss that mark, the way it's laid out right now. We may not be getting the full story, and I can appreciate that, but this is something that we cannot ignore. Our children, especially our young children, are the ones that are setting the stage for us in our old age. And this particular thing is missing the opportunity for children to live a full and fruitful life. Autistic children are very intelligent, and unfortunately, they are wrapped up in a body that is misfiring the cues that they're getting, and misinterpreting some of the cues that they're getting. So I want to again thank Counsel McGugan for bringing this forward to us, and I most certainly will support that.
Thank you, Council Gillis. I guess I would only just add that recently Counsel Gilliland and I attended an anniversary celebration and performance at the Imperial Theatre by Pathways. And certainly, myself and I know many other people around me were in tears for a great part of the evening, looking at the outcome of how the years of support to children suffering with autism spectrum disorders can result in children growing up and becoming part of society in ways that have happened because that support went past the age of five. So I too appreciate this motion from the floor, and I will do my best to convince our voices in the province that these are very special family members, and not to downplay all the other efforts in education and health, but it's not as easy as just saying we can take this up to the age of five and then everything's going to be where it's going to be. That is not the case, and I appreciate the motion myself. I'm going to call the vote then in support. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, Counsel McGugan, for that. That is carried. Okay, I will now turn, is there any other business? Sorry, Counsel Arnold, and then Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, Ward McDougall. Just going back to correspondence C that we had in regards to the OEB hearing for Union Gas, I'd like to make a motion here that we asked the Ontario Energy Board to examine the proposal from Union Gas to expand natural gas services and make it available to all of Lampton County for the same reasons. It is vital for the economic development and business expansion and retention, as well as increased employability, of course, in all of Lampton County. I know we've tried a number of times in our municipality, as well as others here in the county, to expand our natural gas servicing throughout for agriculture and some of the smaller communities, and I think it'd be remiss if we didn't add our voice to this request. So I'd like to make that a motion, please.
Okay, so that, we seconded, Counsel. Okay, we're at cross purposes to each other here. All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Counsel Gillis, you had an item as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden, and you alluded to it this morning when you, when we gave the commendation to our very heroic firefighter who went above and beyond. And it has to do with the fact of the horrendous fires that are now surrounding and engulfing Fort McMurray. Fort McMurray, as many of us know, is near and dear to a lot of our hearts, particularly in Lampton County, because we have a close affinity to the oil patch. We have many workers who used to and still do travel back and forth to the oil patch and live in Fort McMurray on an interim basis, and we have a close affinity with our engineering firms and a lot of our trades. The other thing too is we have a close affinity with Fort McMurray, and specifically Wood Buffalo, which is the county that Fort McMurray is in, because we, in the city of Sarnia, have been a rival of Fort McMurray when it comes to communities in Bloom. We have competed against them five years, and we have, we have won over them every time we've come up in competition. But that in itself is one of the reasons why I bring it to your attention now. Previously, when we had, within that family of communities in Bloom and Lampton Shores as part of that, and formerly Petrolia as part of that, we rallied together when Godrich was hit by the terrible tornado. And I am going to be reaching out to Raymond Carayev, the director of CIB in Quebec, and speak to him about this, to see if we can do something similar as to what we did in Godrich. However, here in Lampton County, I think that we need to step up, and I would ask that we, we will not be meeting again for another month, and hopefully, at that time, the fire will have abated, and the assessment process, the assessment will start. I would like to hope and ask that Lampton County would send a letter of support to Fort McMurray and indeed to Wood Buffalo, because that county is reeling from all of this. And whatever we can do, it may just be a letter of verbal support, but asking them if there is anything that they, that we can do for them. I put that out there.
Is there a seconder for that? Counsel Arnold? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. We'll look after that then, and I'm sure that as time goes along, more will be revealed as to what's to happen. And, you know, as we approach the FCM conference, and Counsel Arnold remembering our long relationship with our counterparts in northern Alberta, I was thinking about it last night. My own son is a wildfire, forest firefighter, and it's devastating how fast this can go. We can remember here in this floor, Slave Lake, and know that if such an event was to occur in our own community, it would be devastating. So we will for now send a letter of support and reach out more specifically to our counterparts in western Alberta, who we've had the long relationship with, and you can keep us tuned through your affiliations with FCM as we go forward. Okay, yes. From our CAO, has asked me to remind council of the banquet this evening at the Royal Canadian Legion, Past County Councillors and Wardens Association. The social begins at 5:00, dinner is at 6:00, cost is $20 per person, and we'll encourage Jenny and all to come out and support that event. Okay, Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Ward McDougall. One of the things that I'd like to make a motion about today, if I may, is I'd like to make a motion to invite our Lampton County First Nations communities to present their flags to be displayed in this chamber. I think it'd be a good thing to do here, it's something we haven't done in the past, and I think that they need to have a place of honour here in this chamber as well. They are part of our community, and I think it'd be a good thing to do.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Weaver? Well, there's certainly. The First Nations communities are certainly part of the Discoveries That Matter brand, that's an excellent suggestion. So you're just looking for an invitation for them to provide the flags, and we would put them up? Okay?
Presentation.
And make a presentation here as well, okay? We will look after that then, provided council supports that. All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried, we'll invite them to come. Thank you, Counsel Arnold. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll turn this over now to our clerk, Mr. Cribs.
Thank you, Warden. There are two bylaws before council this morning, and there is a motion, moved by Counsel Bruce, which is seconded by Counsel Cook, that bylaws numbers 10 and 11 of 2016 as circulated be taken as read a first and second time. Thank you, Warden. There is a motion before council, moved by Counsel Gillland, seconded by Counsel Veen, that bylaws numbers 10 and 11 of 2016 as circulated be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
To our next county council meeting to be held June 1st, with in-camera session as needed to commence at 9:00 in Committee Room 3, moved by Counsel Napper, seconded by Deputy Warden Veen. All in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you, council.